Input on the process of the periodic review. Periodic review of the town plan is the. Are the last speakers working now?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And a handout was to give you some.
Recording in progress.
We're discussing and the different parts of the town plan. And. We're gonna, I think, try to go through it in order of the correct topics. So the first would be land use or could be vision statement, vision statement, if you'd like. I'd like to have people try to be succinct in their commentary. It would be nice if there was a positive to the commentaries instead of just a negative. And with the negatives, we would look for recommendations that you would have to go along with us. I'm up here with the planning commission members Leon Ward, Carolyn Alderman, David West. Western Lit and Thomas West. And then we have down here at the end, we have Elias Schroeder and Peter Brabazon. And I would like to start by asking anybody who wants to be the first to put their hand up and ask a question related to the vision statement, and then we'll move to land use. No takers? Yes.
See the vision statement.
Julie, I think you're supposed to come up to the microphone.
Stuff. It's too bad they couldn't.
If you're a Manchester resident, just say Manchester.
Yes, I'm a Manchester resident. And I would like to see the vision statement have something in here about climate change. I know it has the word sustainable growth. Economic vitality, but there isn't really, I mean, climate change is a crisis, just like the housing is, housing crisis. And I think we need to incorporate both of those in some way in the language that we have as our vision.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's a, I'm supposed to use the sign. That's a very good suggestion. And I also forgot to ask the people at the table if they could take notes so that everybody was gonna put their notes together. Hopefully have a good recap of this meeting.
You don't have somebody to take notes?
Yes. Great. What they reported.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I would be a miss personally and professionally as a resident of Manchester.
Didn't give her name.
If I didn't bring up the word health in the town's plan or vision statement. The importance of a town planning plan having a reference to health language. And even better, a chapter dedicated to health that supports and addresses the fostering of and well-being of the community and residents. If you will oblige and give me the opportunity, I'd like to read something from, I believe the acronym is pronounced truck, but it's Two Rivers Autoquichy Regional Commission. This quoted as saying on their website. Fostering healthier communities is to facilitate and encourage municipalities to plan for and create vibrant, active, healthier, and more equitable places through their built environments. How a community is designed has a direct effect on the health of its residents. Land development patterns, zoning ordinances, and land use.
He's watching it.
Impact.
And Lemke is watching.
Access to services and transportation.
Lyle Bohany, who I know.
Impact.
Linda Benway is watching.
The built environment serves to create and exasperate inequitable access to the resources and power that people need to be healthy and.
Carol.
I don't see how the vision statement as currently written addresses the health of the community and its residents. And so I asked the board for that consideration.
I just speak for myself here and say that I think that's a valid piece of input. And I'd like to see the paperwork on that at some point, if you could give that to me, Victoria.
You have all my notes.
I don't need it. I don't need it right now.
Okay, I'll give it to you at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Professionally speaking, the collaborative has worked tirelessly with numerous planning commissions. Windsor, Wyndham, Bennington. In creating health chapters and health language in their town plans. And this is my invitation to reach out to the collaborative and ask for input. And technical assistance. There's no charge.
Thank you very much, Victoria. Other people want to make some comments about the vision statement?
Hi, I'm Living Sun, but resident of Manchester. I appreciate the opportunity to come and hear everything that people in this town value. And I wanted to just point out the word unique because I do believe this is a really unique place. I also think that word is used so often. And I wonder if there is a way we could involve the community in really defining what makes Manchester unique. Because I think for each person who's drawn to this area, it might be something different. But I think if we clarify what that is, is that it's a welcoming place, it has natural beauty. I know all of these things are written in, and I think for us, like, tell me back some years ago, and I saw a lot of that in there. But I wonder, putting that in the vision statement would help. You know, everything will lean toward that definition. And in some towns in the Northwest where I grew up, we had something called community treasures. And everyone came in the town and they wrote down the things that were most important to them about the town. And it was really interesting to see how some things came up over and over again. And a lot of things that maybe I don't think about would be great for me to hear what other people about in this town.
Thanks.
Yes.
I would just like to ask the committee to keep Manchester the way Manchester is. If you want to keep your business up here, if you want to keep the tourists coming here, don't make it like every place else. So be very careful about that because I see changes going on that you're taking away some of the beauty. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Anybody else want to talk about the vision statement? Would you like to move to land use? Any volunteers?
So my name's Kyle Turner, I'm a Manchester resident. And I was looking at the 2017 plan. I really like section 2.2 specifically on wildlife resources. I think it's really well done. The push I have for the next plan is I'd love to see a emphasis on. Well, the specific sentence that I really like are right after C Mac 2.3. The species sightings include grass, saguys, flowers, trees, butterflies, sound, there's bats. It's talking about some of the wildlife we love here in Manchester. And throughout the plan, it talks about how Town Hall really tries to be a vegan sustainability. I'd love for Town Hall to adopt either a no mow May, so that being grass area right in front of Town Hall, or a lower mowing frequency. In a study done by UMass and USDA, they found in western Massachusetts, mowing once every three weeks provided the highest abundance of pollinator species in the lawn. So adding something like that and thinking about our lawn care regimen would be cool. Thank you.
Anyone else about the town plans, land use issues? Yes, Mike?
Specifically related to the land use. There's a reference to promoting mixed-use development. And it seems to me that mixed-use development is contrary to what our zoning bylaws are all about. For the most part, people want to have residential areas that are limited to residential uses and don't want commercial mix throughout the residential area. So it's one thing if you talk about including residential uses within the downtown. That's one kind of mixed-use development that I could certainly favor. What I grew up with knowing Manchester to be. But spreading commercial uses throughout the residential area is not something I can support. So this is just a generalized statement, I realize. And the specifics will come later, but that would be my comment on that. The other comment I'd have is. And this somewhat backs up what some people have said earlier or gets more specific. I think there needs to be a goal in terms of what the size of the town is we would like to see. Or a maximum of what we would like to see. The words on the paper could describe a town of four to five thousand, or it could describe a town of eight to 10,000 just as easily. And I don't think most people would like to see the latter. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
I'm gonna start off with a question. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that there is an excuse development in what I call downtown Manchester. So along Main Street and Depot Street, primarily Depot Street. My understanding is that that's mixed-use. Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Liam. I know we can't mandate people or business owners or property owners. But can we create a way to strongly encourage or strongly recommend that when a business moves in on one floor, that the other levels of the building are considered for housing? I mean, yes, this is a hugely vastly different demographic, but Portland may, or maybe Woodstock or Burlington, where you have one floor being commercial use and then apartments or condos above them, rather than like the old Factory Point building. And if we could see more of that in Manchester, I think that that would create walkability. Wait, I'm going to your vision statement. Economic vitality, growth, community engagement. Whereas it seems that many of the buildings are either one or the other, even though they're in a mixed-use zone. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that and I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure that other people at this table comment on the input from the audience. I think that there are a lot of popular and successful town plans, mostly in bigger towns than ours, that take that approach and they want to encourage second and third floor residents on top of commercial spaces. So that's not unheard of at all. Yes. Didn't see your face, Bill.
Saw my hand, it still comes. I'd just like to comment on this last comment a little bit. Why I agree with that general statement, you also need to recognize that when you do multi-use like that in the same building, it definitely increases costs. And so that's why you have to be careful about mandating versus encouraging. Having done that, as was earlier referred to, I contest that putting residential on top of commercial space, you get the additional requirements of fireproofing, separate access routes for upper levels and even potentially elevators, which may not be required in a single-use space in the building.
Thank you.
So encouragement is great, mandating, I'd be very cautious about that.
I was gonna make the same comment. I like the word encourage me. And I'm not crazy about the word mandating, but others for this topic of land use in the town. Should we move along? To housing, which might be the number one issue these days with many people. And I look forward to input from the audience. No one?
I'm Joanna Plonard again, and I'm on the Housing Task Force. So we've been in the process, slow process of coming up with some ideas and recommendations for housing in Manchester. And one of the things that in my reading, I've learned that there are some towns in various locations that are pre-approving housing plans to speed up. I know what we're in a crisis here, and we have to get our housing done quickly. So there's some towns that are doing this, they're pre-approving maybe four or five designs of houses so that they can be available to individuals, builders, and take it there and they can do minor changes. But in this way, there's a lot of permitting that's, you know, this, you get around that. So I would like to see that thought be being at least thought about to consider that idea as, you know, hiring someone to maybe approve, design these, these various examples of maybe a one bedroom, a two bedroom, and so forth. And that they're out there available. For folks to use. Just so that.
I personally think it's a great thought, and we have, as you know, a member of the planning commission on the Housing Task Force. And the Housing Task Force, to me, is very important in the whole process of addressing housing issue. I think another member of the Planning Commission has repeatedly said it's the number one issue that faces the town right now. There's some validity to that.
And also, as I said in my opening remarks, the climate crisis, I think, has to be sort of linked together with the housing crisis. In that, if you don't like the word mandate, well, maybe encourage builders to use thermal heat networks and, you know, not not see the fuels, oil and gas and those things used as least as possible because we do have goals, the town has goals, the Energy Committee here has goals, the state has goals, and I don't think we're meeting our goals in the energy sector. So it's very important that we are mindful of that, we incorporate that as best we can. And make it so that it's, there's a lot of money out there to do these kinds of things, especially when it's renewable energy. So if we encourage builders to apply for that money, or, you know, we set up something where we discuss all of these options with the builders in the area, modular homes, you know, we know that that's a less expensive way to go. So these ideas will put together and present them to, you know, the Select Board, the Planning Board. Because I think it's very, very important that the housing and the energy get married together so that we're not, come 2030, there's going to be mandates that we be at net zero emissions. Why not start now? They come through 2030, any, every house that's built, every building has to have net energies, it's zero net energy. So it just makes sense to sort of encourage it now before we get to these deadlines. Liam?
It's good. Thank you. Hey, we'll review that handup.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, super. So my name is Juliet Britton. I will leave my camera off, just, I'm not sure of my connection right now. I had a follow-up question, I think, to the last comment that was made. There is, there are towns, perhaps there are towns that have some models of homes that have already been pre-approved. Can we have specific examples around the state? Is it like Middlebury? Is it Charlotte? Can, can somebody please comment if that is the case, that these have been approved, that we could look at examples around the state and other communities?
Been here for a while. I'm thinking of the Midwest, different, different houses. As a state, since where their their towns did go through this process, and it's probably four, five, six of them that I found, but again, not here in Vermont. But we can, we can point you into those directions of how they did it, what types of houses they built, or they approved. And then we could see if there's anything within that boundary that we could, we could consider using.
But I would say that we chose some models for Manchester, they would fit the look of Manchester. So they wouldn't, it wouldn't be the same that they already use in the Midwest.
Oh, right, right.
But it would be the city Vermont-centric.
Right. The idea of, yeah, just doing that, the process of it would be, I think, a time saver. And we have to get housing built, so might be a little work upfront, or more work upfront, but wander around, it might be worth it.
I've spent some time trying to educate myself on what's being done by Habitat. And it's very impressive. And then the other place that you might find help in this area is a project that Joe Miles is doing, I think, would be beneficial. But I believe all of us in the, in town government are really waiting for some leadership and guidance and information from the Housing Task Force. It's, it's an important issue, and I know everybody here believes that. Anybody else on this? Yes.
I'm a little confused. I want to know where the people are coming from that need the housing. I saw one professional person this week, lovely woman. And I said, you have to commute. She said, oh, yes, I come in from New York State. I said, would you move here if there were housing? She said, oh, no, I have a beautiful farm there. I'm very happy. So just make sure you know who's coming to live in these places. I was at a meeting this morning with, I consider a lot of bright people. And the name Habitat came up. If, if somebody were gonna build something, then Habitat do it, so it's low cost, not like this.
It's a valid issue. The, the cost of housing in New York State near the Vermont border is, is lower than it is in Manchester. And a lot of the people are gonna answer, just like you said, but there are also a lot of people are gonna say, I'd like to live here. It's a lot closer and we need to, we need to enhance our housing options. I think, believe everybody at this table thinks it's a really big issue. And want to do it right, we're looking for the guidance from the Housing Task Force to give us more help on this issue. And I know the Select Board is, both Select Board appointed the Housing Task Force, they know it's a very significant issue.
This low-cost housing.
I might say that there's almost no such thing as low-cost housing anymore, unfortunately. The cost of housing is tough. And, but housing that is affordable is, is what the focus is. And affordability can have a wide range, but it's, it's a tough issue. The cost of housing is a really tough issue. Bill?
All right, a couple of things here, if I can remember. First, talking about the standards and regulations. I think the state has given us a path whereby permitting and getting housing ready to build quickly is at our doorstep right now, providing that we designate our districts. And in particular, where we have water and sewer in the appropriate fashion. I'm not sure of all those designations, there's a downtown district, there's neighborhood districts and so on. But we need to designate the districts that gives us the maximum benefit from a safer perspective or potential grant perspective for housing affordability assistance perspectives in our water and sewer district. That would be one. Secondly, I'd be careful about. We've got competing, we've got competing issues here. We've got the cost of housing, and then we've got our drive to net zero. And I, my frank opinion and experience the same, we're going too far in the housing. Our drive to net zero is dramatically driving up our housing costs. So you gotta watch, be careful what you put in your energy standards and what you're putting in your, your housing desires. I kind of like that up until our pre-2021 housing standards codes. And this, this comes from, it's beyond what your board does. You know, we picked all the low-end fruit off a tree. And we picked all that fruit for, let's say, 25 cents an apple. And now we're spending $2,025, the couple dozen remaining apples in our energy standards. And our last time around, it added, on a single home, our family home, at least 15, more like 17, 18% of the cost without changing anything to save maybe $500 to $700 a year in your energy bill. So I, I prefer these standards to come to a plea hall for new construction. You know, all our problems are way beyond our new construction. It's in existing buildings, our transportation, building data centers for cryptocurrency and all those issues. But we, this cost net zero is hurting our housing problem. The other thing is, and I'll be a little bit more frank than Mike was, I'm Northland earlier, is that we've got to put serious restrictions on short-term rentals. At the very least, make them comply as all other commercial hospitality facilities do. And keep them out of our so-called residential districts. But that has, in the last five years, and I'm not against all short-term rentals, I'm talking about the full-time short-term rentals. Particularly those without resident managers. But has taken at least 70 of our pre-existing housing, I mean, our existing housing stock that existed as residences prior to 1920 out of circulation. And so effectively, you have to replace some seven units. And then that's a great part of our dilemma today. Other cities have completely demanded, you know, have completely abolished short-term rentals. And we have other hospitality, and I understand people use them, I use them when they travel. So there's kind of a reluctance to, let's say, meet this head-on. But if housing is our number one problem, I would say we have to look at that and. Yeah, you know, um, properly. Uh, synergize um the different types of short term rentals and those that I think are full time are the one that we need to. Frankly banned. Like just like.
Thank you.
So that's my comments on housing and.
Are you talking about here? You said nineteen twenty twenty twenty.
Well, we're three bullet points in plus the vision statement. And. I would ask the planning commission to consider putting in a. Uh, dictionary or key code or something like that in the town plan to help. Define what is meant by some of these words.
Definitions.
Definitely. Thank you. Like, I'm not sure what a vibrant downtown means. Is there data that's going to support? I can't see when I'm looking into my house. Is a vibrant downtown, is that data driven? Is it numbers? Is it people? Is it occupancy? I don't know what that means anymore than to the person who brought up the word unique. I don't know what that means. Um. Affordable housing, we've gone around and around and around with that definition. I'm not sure what affordable housing means anymore. The last time I looked, the least expensive house on the market was one in my neighborhood. And over half a million dollars. Is that affordable? Because when I bought my house. Two driveways away, I bought it for about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that was a stretch for me and my husband thirty years ago. So if we could have a dictionary definition based key code as to what is meant in the town plan by some of this language. I think that would help. Guide boards like yourself, the select board. Our town employees on what is what are goals.
I'll respond to that. But I have a silent group here, so if I talk too much, holler at me, but. I think that more than one of us, when we studied the town plan and made comments on it, we came up with the word for both. And it could be, I think. Uh, more succinct and more detailed. And I think that that definition that you just said of what is vibrant, what is unique? Why do they and how do they apply to our town? That's a good example. So other, have we dealt with housing?
I'm. I know Bill was concerned about the net zero. Goal. That's supposed to be set for twenty thirty now, with the governor is looking to delay that. Um. But there is money out there. There's a lot of money out there to do some of these um over rental fit. Like we do have to weather weatherize the old houses here and there's a lot of money. Did you get that thing in the mail? I got something in the mail the other day. From um. Vision City Vermont. Listing out all the different um rebates you could get. So that's something we can encourage. We could, you know, I don't know if all of you got that better. Yeah, um. And that that's one thing we could sort of spearhead a project to make sure we're getting people um familiar with this money that's up there. To make their houses efficient and safer and so forth. Um. But there is money out there at the federal level, at the state level to um install. You know, non. Uh, no, no gas and fuels that are nonrenewable. So. I think that we should really look into that and make sure that we have a good handle on the kind of money that's there. And for what kinds of projects.
Ready? Economic, are we done with housing? Is there any other comments on the housing category? Can we talk about economic development and how to foster a vibrant downtown? Um. I personally am concerned about the vacancies, uh, commercial vacancies in the town. I think that's a negative and it hurts us and we need to focus some. Time on that and energy and looking for other input on this subject. Anybody else have anything they want to say about it? I'm going to say the same thing to you. It may be your last time.
Economic development, when I think of economic development. I think of beyond appealing. I think of appealing to the people who live here and work here first. Um. When I need something. My choices as a local resident are really, really limited. I. I appreciate over the years having the choice of a Ramadi and Bruce Brothers, but that's not my real world. I don't know about everything here tonight, but um. That's, you know, I remember the days when my kids needed a pair of blue jeans to go to school and it wasn't a store in Manchester where I could go in. And buy a good old pair of Levi's or Wranglers. Kids probably don't wear those anymore, but like what do us local people do when we need a pair of blue jeans? And I know that we go, most of us all online, but some of us are textile shoppers where we need to feel it. So I would start with an economic vitality or vibrance as to what the local residents need first. And then think of, okay, then what can we provide to the people that are visiting here or live here part time or on weekends? Then I'm sorry, or are here and using short term rentals?
Thank you, Victoria. Um, it's a. It's a balancing act. Um, sometimes you're going to have success getting an interesting out of town retailer in here that might not be appealing to you. But does appeal to the visitor or someone with a, you know, different perspective or taste, but it's uh. I personally, as having been in the retail business, I'm concerned about the vacancies in town and I think it's something that should be on the radar for us. So. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I remember years ago coming out of bio slumber. And they were there asking people what you need in town.
I I think you're supposed to give us your name when you.
Oh, Anne Pierce.
I didn't hear you.
Here, Anne Pierce.
Thank you.
Um, and I thought that was a great thing. And I said, there were no Sony or two threat in in this town. Next thing I come in, they have a whole rack selling stuff. So that was a good thing to do. So if people in the store really want to know, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on economic development? Yes.
I don't know if I I don't have a a. Business, but I would love to see a kind of. Uh, community third place that engages, something like the library, something that was open. Later, I know my husband's a teacher at BBA and he says that teenagers struggle in the winter with places to go inside. They don't feel welcome. In uh, loitering for lack of that term, but they love a place and I, you know, a kind of. Food hall, arcade gathering place where also locals could get more affordable food, like a food court. Food hall is the fancy word now, where we can have some of the local farms and and, you know, people who just want to. Not pay for the overhead of the restaurant. And I always think about that vacant spot in town. Um, and uh, it's it's kind of big, it's in the Crystal Palace. It'd be so amazing. I don't know how we'd get that done. I just would love to see that.
I think it's a really valid point. I said, this is uh, would tell you, maybe you should talk to Mark Tashin at BBA. Because he seems to be able to accomplish a lot of impressive things and also to long trail. It's a valid issue. And I don't think we're the ones that are going to help with it very much, but those guys do accomplish a lot, both in those organizations and. They have the kids that in mind for it and and um, they'll see him.
I just a question when you say, because I also noticed the vacancy and I notice it in the heart of town. Um, you know, where we want pedestrians to be walking, but it's not. It's not a comfortable thing to walk by a bunch of vacant spots, right? And there's a bunch of parking lots, like not an inviting thing. When you say something we should be concerned about, what can we do? Is there, besides talking to Mark Tashin over there, things we as community members can do to help?
I'd start out my talk then again.
And who and the town owns those buildings or not? Someone private?
Not the Crystal Palace, not.
They are the J Crew and the two next to Regent Towns. Yeah, they're trying to sell them so they. So if the town, can we do something in this thing that the town owns or how we determine that?
I can't speak for that. This is the planning commission. That would be a discussion you'd have with the select board and the town manager.
Okay.
But I'd start with Mark.
Okay.
About the concept, because it's a, to me personally, I think it's a valid concept to concern.
Yeah, and not just, I mean, I think a place where older people, younger people, kids can run around. It's a, it. It's cold a lot of the year here. And you know, when I had a baby here, we left, we went to town, going into, I I started, I struggled what to do in the winter, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Wilbur, is the commercial they consume in Manchester?
That I don't know.
But it, from your perspective, it's a lot.
I I don't know what the rate is. I'm sorry. Anybody else on the economic development area? Transportation.
Well, I'm going to make a, I'm making a comment here on this. Um. Because this is the biggest, I mean, I've been a thing for years and years, never seen as many people or whatever. So this is great. Thank you all for coming. And while we're over here, I'm going to throw some ideas at you. I'd like to hear some feedback on these. These are ideas for. Economic development. So one of the ideas that I've been throwing out for years is. The idea in the downtown core to have ground level be retail or restaurants and upstairs be offices. Rather than having offices on ground level and, you know, having the upstairs also be an office. Um, that way we don't have tourists coming to town in the downtown core and just walk over. Okay, here's a real estate office. Here's a lawyer's office. Here's another real estate office. Here's a whole folks senior care place, you know, I can, these aren't places when you go here, I feel like these are um. Drawing people back to our town. So the idea would be, and this is not, this is not, I'm saying it's going to happen. It's about what your feedback. The idea would be to have a downtown downstairs be retail restaurants and upstairs be office. What would be your thoughts on this? Bill?
Accessibility.
Accessibility.
Of this, you're any kind of public. Office where you have to have clients, you have to have them get access. So. The ground floor, best way to provide that. If you're going out onto a strictly second floor, you either have to have. An elevator or split double, you know, you got access on the back side of the building. Come right in or some other way of access. A large consideration in terms of that concept.
Okay.
What about?
That that as well.
Yes, the bottom of the mountain, but I would suggest.
Finding people to stand up for the mic and Leon, if you could use the mic as well, people cannot hear. Sorry.
Okay, one more thing as well, and I just wanted to say that as far as empty, they did still here in town. I think that will be Dan over when he didn't do this, but um, with the Ramon sale and the JK Adams and the. And Morgan Peter coming in, those are the kind of businesses that I would love to see. Come into the empty vacant empty spaces in the town, places that are Vermont centric that that say when people come from out of town, come from Boston or New York. They come here, they see this place and they go, this is what Ramon's all about. So I'd like to, you know, if anybody has any connections to encourage those other businesses in the state. That are lot based businesses to open up in our. Same as. So.
I want to second that. Uh, having been in the business of getting commercial vending or with it out. Any help you will get from people who are in the community is really beneficial and and the economic. Boost that you get by having those whole. Building is really significant. Anybody else here?
I just wanted to say you were talking about the businesses on the first floor in the previous town and there was a section about nightlife. A vibrant nightlife and we have some friends who own uh uh. Who place on Main Street. And the street parlor nights, there's such a vibrancy there. And we were talking about how if more restaurants and more retail spots were available so that it wasn't like everyone. Going that there would be a whole lot of people leaving that.
Thank you. Um, transportation. Um. One of the focuses of the town plan has been and will be the walkability and also the biking aspect. Um, there is a committee between the village and the town that in our Peter Branson is on that committee. That is addressing how to get a bike path from Union Street of the Village all the way to uh MMS. Uh, there's a a real focus and effort to do this and the walkability is also something that is definitely a high priority. Um, in the town offices. Any comments on that issue?
I think that could be part of the expectation. I think that um. Again, there's money, they have plenty of money right now anyway. To buy electric vehicles. They need to get more, be charging stations, but I think the state's working on that. But I think this transportation section should encouraging. Either because that's a market as well, you'd see these or. It's and pointing to the direct direction of good money is.
Are you staying for the for the city to the town to buy more and for their vehicles or you say?
Yeah, both. I mean, the town, that's a good point. Yeah, the town is. They have electric ones and what is, I think that's something that should be in the transportation section as well. Yeah, the town vehicles, you know. I'm just receiving a grant to. Build a huge EV and research. Yeah, so we, you know. Somebody can look back and like. Encourage, you know, weather station and evenings and all this stuff we could do of advancing the goal of. It's zero, we know, people.
There was an article in the, no, um. There was an article, I believe, in the New York Times today about the new postal delivery trucks that are electric. It was very interesting. Go ahead, Anne.
Anne Pierce yet in. Um, I appreciate walkability, viability, but I'm also talking about drive ability. Because sometimes it's hard to drive around here. And a lot of it has to do with the size of vehicles and the parking areas and the way, you know, vehicles stick out in the road. You have to drive around, all that good kind of stuff. And the chromes walks, I think, need to be. Um, better and I know the signs are painted, all that good kind of stuff. The ones that have the flashing lights, I want all of them to have the flashing lights. Because, you know, just coming down here, someone in a dark coat walked right for me. You can't see them. So. If I know they're coming, I will look.
Here's one of those examples, Wilbur, of enhanced public transportation options. Because there there are public transportation options that connect. Manchester up to Rowan, Manchester down to Arlington and Bennington. The trick is though. Figuring out how you're going to get from your house to the bus station. So I had a doctor's appointment at the hospital the other day. And I had to figure out. Was going to get from my house to the bus station so I could get down to the hospital. Or when my car goes into service in Rowan, because it's under warranty. How am I going to get my? From my house and three and a half miles to the.
From my house and three and a half miles to the bus station? So that's the key. Because there are, there is public transportation, it's getting to the public transportation. Hubs.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna, is it? Yes, Jim.
One quick question, for those of you who don't know, Bill, very largely involved with this. We have four charging units right in the middle of downtown for electric vehicles. Eight, well, four units with eight hoses. Now, they've been there for a year and a half, I believe, and we still don't have signage. And I have spoken to our town manager about it. I believe Bill has also. I would ask that we get some signage that they exist. They are directly behind Walgreens, next to the men's soccer field. Um, and anybody who thinks we have a problem with charging units, obviously. Or to get informed.
I, I will, will say that those, those charging units are in, there's four, four charging units with eight. With eight hoses, but they're in front of four spaces.
Six.
Six, six spaces.
Yeah.
They, they really, um. Tricky?
All the little.
Okay, okay, I was wondering about that.
The whole, the whole parking lot got redone, you know, with a lot. Thank you to Bill and to some other folks uh, to pushing this thing. Uh, so we had, we had to do some accommodations, okay, but the point is that we do have charging infrastructure in downtown.
We are working on signage for all the parking areas and all, and that will add those in as well.
Okay, I hope that's fairly soon.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on transportation? Community?
My name's Karen Darian. Um, the bicycles and the scooters on the sidewalks, I'd like to see them on the roads.
I don't know the rules on that, Peter, can you?
Sidewalks are just more pedestrian, right? So they shouldn't really be riding.
Wrong time, I watch them out, they're strong, they're back and forward, the time that clearly inviting people.
In most municipalities, they encourage people to use bicycles to use the sidewalk if there are no bicycling present. And it's a, a, a danger. I believe right at the top of that hill, it's pretty narrow, there's no, there's no um, curbs. And it's a blind spot to move the hills, so that's probably why they're using the sidewalk in that area. Like that, that's congestion.
I've noticed that also, Karen, maybe you should uh, ask the town manager's office about.
Likely to be nice.
Um, community facilities and services, I'm sorry, I'm doing, yes, Bill.
Yeah, I just like to, I go. Um, the comment about signage. I, I think uh, maybe it's ten, quite a while back that we had. Um, a substantial apartment walk signage all over town that was, I think, covered by. Such a substantive state grant and those signs have either kind of disappeared or. Um, I think there's a few of them here and there, um, plus we had some kiosks, I think. Um, a, a, a much larger, greater emphasis on signage to. Not only inform the um, visitor of the options, but also. Um, are, are residents. A lot of people, unless you're tuned into everything that's going on, don't realize that you can even charge your car behind Walgreens, you know, and. Uh, things like that, so I think um. Tractive, but um, uh, reasonable. But prolific sign, signage to guide people on to where they can park. Uh, no, uh, it's a walk, tourism to use their bikes. Um, letting people know that we have, most businesses have um, bike stands for parking and so on. But uh, I think information passing on and finding ways to pass on information that aids. Um, tourists and residents of how to enjoy the town, use the town and um. Use our services is, uh, should be part of the plan.
Any other comments on the issue of transportation, et cetera?
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Um, I, I know we talk a lot about walking and biking, which I love. I also, I brought this up at town meeting and. I wonder how we can also encourage. Not, not ever driving in, in the winter months. And I, I thought, uh, we wanted to pose ideas, I was thinking if we. And charged uh, non-locals to park in the area, could the funds for something like that be used to? And start a shuttle service that went so that we encouraged tourists at least. Because I know on those weekends when all the tourists come in, it's really hard to drive here. And, and I think locals might even use something like that. We had different posts around town and it was a festive kind of. Electric trolley or something. I know that's expensive, but if we, um, you know, it. Charged non-locals to park in the area and use some of those funds or find creative ways. To raise money for that, I think it could make this place an even more vibrant place to visit and live in. Thanks.
Vibrant, right? Um, there is a proposal from uh, B C R C. To take a look at the transportation issues in the town and um. It can be improved, and I don't know whether the town will adopt the whole. Proposal that just came in, I think yesterday or the day before, right before the weekend. Uh, but it, it addresses issues just like that.
Will you make it public?
Yes, it will be public when it, uh, if the town accepts it. And then the report is given to us, that then becomes public, right, Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, should we look at it as a community beforehand to decide if you wanna make it?
No, the decision whether we accept the, the B C R C's proposal to do a study. Will be a determination by the select board of the town and the town manager. And then there'll be, if it's accepted, if they decide it's worth spending this money. As a matter of fact, some of the money might be provided through a grant, then once that. Uh, study is, is given to us, it will be public information. Alrighty, I'm gonna move along to community facilities and services and um. I'm, I'm not gonna shut off dialogue here, but I'm gonna say that it's obviously a responsibility of the town government. To make sure that we take care of everything that we have. And I think in general, we do a pretty good job of that, but if there's any comments on that, speak up or forever hold your peace.
I don't know if it's in the operating, but procurement. Whatever you buy within the town, we have a procurement policy so that we're buying things that are. Energy efficient. Taking into account whether they're going to. Be drawbacks or emissions or anything like that. Um, I think it, it would be thoughtful of us as a town to know. Physical procurement policy so that we are buying things based on certain criteria.
Sharon Darian, um, I think the public works does an amazing job. Last year was probably the first year I was super pleased with how they kept the sidewalks. I would just like to see that going forward because it is such a walking community and we have so many tourists coming. The sidewalks really to, to get clicked on.
Thank you, Karen. Anything else on that? Environmental stewardship. That might um, be an area that encompasses a number of things that have already been discussed here. Guess back there in the corner.
Sorry, I'm slow. Tim, my name's Tim Waller, I'm a resident. And uh, I'd like to comment very briefly on the presence of the use of biofuels in the existing plan. Um, state, there's, there's a list of recommendations regarding use of biomass electricity generation in Vermont. That was adopted in December twenty twenty-three as an addendum to the Vermont Climate Action Plan. If I could just, be just a small section of it. Uh, there's a list of potential benefits, I think we can all imagine that. Uh, but I'd like to acknowledge some of the potential harms Vermont. And point of generation, electric lead biomass emits CO2 in quantities comparable to fossil fuels. In its particular matter, creating potential health impacts for people living near biomass plants. May have negative impact on forest ecosystems through removal of trees, treetops and branches. They damage the culture and heritage of tribal communities through actions such as. Siting decisions, this is the last I'll read here. The Vermont Climate Council urges Vermont to weigh these benefits and harms carefully and think creatively about how to address them. And then it lists a bunch of recommendations um, for very specific studies. Um, our town energy plan includes a lot of um. Language recommending displacing fossil fuels with bio-based fuels. And in my mind, it's, it's backwards to think that you can achieve our greenhouse gas emission goals by replacing one. Combustion-based technology with another combustion-based technology. The potential sustainability of creating that fuel, which I'm not really sure it is sustainable. Doesn't necessarily imply the use of that fuel. And I would like the, the um, planning commission to consider de-emphasizing the use of bio-based fuels. And the energy committee would gladly participate, they participate that and provide all the edits necessary for the energy plan. Thank you.
Does, wait a minute, does that, you said uh, for electric generation, so you're talking of. Uh, about not having biomass fuels for electric generation.
The, that was what I cited as a, as a reference. There's a lot of language in the plan to displace the use of fossil fuels with, to uh, advanced wood. Or for larger, uh, with the McNeil um, electric generation plant in Burlington. The energy committee's biggest concern is ramping up. Of bio-based fuels for larger businesses or for community, larger communities. Woodstoves are here and there, there are many places. I heat my homes with wood and every year I use less of it. I've been using a heat pump and, and trying to minimize where I can.
But to me, there's a lot of difference between. Uh, not encouraging biomass fuels for electric generation versus um, biomass fuels for home heating.
So the energy plan, I, I, a little bit of identity stuff, I should have this down. There are certain uses of it, there are many different uses of it. Some of it's to generate electricity, some of it's to displace heavy uh, equipment that runs on diesel. So it's, it's mixed uses of it, and I think the plan should reflect our values and some of the state. Um, recommendations to at least be cautious. And what I'd like to see is de-emphasizing uh, the use of bio-based fuels across the board, rather than telling people. You know, we'll, we'll give you a wood stove if you'll just stop burning coal or whatever. Um, I'd like to see it cross the board, but if there's any, if we could do and limit that to new generation plants or. Larger commercial uh, installations of wood, wood, so-called advanced wood um, heating or. Uh, generation, I would be glad to, the committee would be glad to submit those edits in the plan.
I just have a question for Mr. Lawler, can you clarify, as biofuels encompasses a, it's very large category, I mean. Cuts algae and all sorts of things, are you speaking specifically about wood-based? You know, clarify precisely which type of people you're referring to.
I, I would, in my mind, there, there, as I mentioned, there's a um, there's continuum of them, right? There's, we can create fuels from like charcoal or um, yeah, how can we create uh, fuels to displace diesel? Right, those come from different places too. I, I think what I'm looking for is the, the biggest proponents of burning wood. Or chips or, you know, harvesting trees so that we can create heat or create electricity from. And I don't, I think we use for transportation anymore. So I could, I could send that to you specifically, uh, but I'm, I'm here to volunteer to, to do the legwork here and, and. Revise the existing plan to um, move in that direction. If the state's already moving in that direction, I'd like to follow suit rather than have to play catch-up.
I was not aware that the town plan uh, promotes the use of biomass fuels for electricity generation.
It's all part of the leaked data that's been updated. I haven't gone through the latest um. Revision to it, but it's, it's part of a very larger picture. It's included in the state plan as a. Potentially sustainable fuel that could displace fossil fuels. I don't believe in my lifetime. It, I could just, I could, you know, um, call my usage of wood sustainable. Uh, maybe on a, you know, geological scale, you can consider it sustainable, uh, but I believe it's in, included in the state plan. And the regional plan and that's the town plan because of that aspect of it. But on the flip side of that coin, there's no reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, which is another goal that's codified in the statutes. So it might get you closer to one goal, but you're no closer to the other, so you, you take me a lot of steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In number six, under environmental stewardship. The last line says, and manage waste effectively. Are we talking like septic waste, cigarette waste? Biopasser waste, like what are we talking?
Um, you wanna answer that?
Well, we, I, I don't have to cheat, buddy, but the, I think, I think, um. For six.
Leon wrote that, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Hit on the bar.
I, I was.
Sorry, I think you want the spot.
No, I was, uh, overall um, generality of the town plan, the um. Uh, water, it, it just has to do with water, so we actually do have a section in the, in the town plan on water management, town sewer. And it's basically to say that, you know, that we. Manage our, our.
Sure, so my whole question is, what plan does the town have? Whether it's this board, this select board, the town manager have, if our. Town wastewater management system fails in two weeks.
That'll be a question for the town manager.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. My personal opinion is, first of all, there's nothing more important than water. And we have to be very concerned about where we're gonna be relative to that source ten, twenty, fifty years from now, critical. The other thing that I think is related to what you're talking about is not so much septic as it is. When you go out to the dump in East Dorset, in ten years, that's not gonna be here. That's a, that's a dinosaur and it's gonna really impact everything.
And the, and Wilbur, that's.
It's gonna impact everything we do, that's to be monumental. And then the other issue that's of concern is you've gotta make sure that the housing that you promote in the downtown core. The, the septic system can handle, so those are, those are issues that are of concern and I think. Definitely in the, in the sites here for everybody in the town.
I was passive in the question, but you brought up why I asked the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that, uh, number six? Yes, Bill?
I'd like to comment on the Waller's statement that, um. Wood is been a use of um. A way to heat our homes since people landed in Vermont now. Uh, and the, the technology has greatly improved. The use and the, reduce the emissions from burning wood, so. I think you have to be careful when you talk about this large project. He mentioned the um. Uh, generating facilities that use huge amounts of wood and are very efficient and as a result. Re, re, uh, lease, um, undo um, uh, amount of emissions. On the other hand, um, I'm using wood heating systems in all my buildings, advanced wood heating system. Which meet all current um, uh, standards and um. There's a positive benefit to our forest land by um, using um, woodchips and wood. Um, using um woodchips and wood pellets for heat. Because um that is, they're primarily come from what might be called scrap or second grade wood. And then old um lumbering process and also um. Proper forest, a managing of our forested lands. So there's. Uh, there's pros and cons, pros and cons with everything we do. But I would be, I I look at both sides of that issue carefully before you uh start saying this is what we should be doing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, implementation, um. Engage the community through public forums to gather input and foster collaboration. I'm going to uh. Repeat what Lena just said. I I'm very impressed by the turnout tonight and. I look forward to doing this again when we've got, uh, we're further along in the process. And may be able to give you something to uh read and look at and and critique us on. But I, I think this has been very good and I I look forward to. I got a list of things. I know everybody else has made a list. Um, and I think this has been very beneficial. Any, no, wait a minute. Is that number ten? Or how many times have you got that? Any other issues? Any other input from people?
Other than Victoria.
Go ahead, Victoria.
I really appreciate everyone that's all J P. Right, what did you talk? Wilbur, it came um up in a conversation. About sort of, I'm going to call it checks and balances. So over the years, the town has had a town plan. Like most if not many towns in Vermont. And if I'm not mistaken, it may even be. Mandated or strongly encouraged that towns, town plans. But what sort of checks and balance system is there once a town plan is written? For the town to act and implement what they said they were going to do.
Definitely don't follow.
That's one answer. That, that's a, that's a partial answer, I think. And another thing that was brought up.
So, so can I rephrase it?
Um. In a, in a conversation Peter Babazan and I had with a member of the DRB today, this subject was brought up relative to. How, how we look at that town plan, how we use it. It's. It, it doesn't make any sense for us to do all this work, do a town plan that won't be a major change in what we have. It'll be a polish it. It'll have input from the state regarding new mandates, but it's not going to be. Um.
I recognize that.
Um. But there's no use in doing a town plan and then putting it in the drawer and never seeing it. So one of the things that we have to do is to have a periodic review of, of how we do, are doing against the town plan. And it's something that was talked about today and I hope that we can get the select board. Together with the DRB and the planning commission to maybe twice a year sit down. And say, okay, how are we doing? Are we complying with this? Are we achieving this? And that's an important part of this process.
Thank you. There's a process called. Results-based accountability. That I would strongly encourage. All town people to look at. I can send you a link that will help. Uh, establish goals and objectives. And during that review process. It would allow you to check in and say, oh, yeah, we're online. To meet our goals and objectives or oops, we forgot to do this or we're lagging behind.
One of the other things that happened when we started looking at the town plan several months ago, uh, the, the issue of being verbose and not being succinct enough. Came up, but also the other issue um that came up is, is. We're not setting goals and also talking about how to achieve those goals.
Correct.
And that's.
And that's what results-based accountability does.
That's something that, that we need to improve. We looked at other towns. Plans and they were more focused on. Here's what we want to do. Here's what the town wants. Here's how to accomplish it and let's see results from them. So it's, that's. An important step we have. Any other questions tonight? We have a yes here.
Are you also going to type, uh, tighten up the zoning ordinances? To, to get rid of variances and waivers and all that to make it.
I, I'm not sure. I look at it personally. Um, I can't speak for everybody. I don't look at it from that standpoint of variance in the waivers. I look at it. If we change the town plan, we have to make sure that the ordinances are are in step with the town plan. And then separately from that, I think that if. You wanted to start a new bit, well, not you, because you have experience in doing it already, but with this young lady who wanted to start a business here. She's going to be overwhelmed by these town ordinances. They're not easy to understand. She's not going to know which ones she has to. Apply for and and not which ones apply to her, et cetera. I think that the ordinances are tough. But nonetheless, they have to make sure they, they are in sync with the town plan.
Just one more thing.
Yes.
I, I know I say this at all the meetings, but I really enjoyed being here and I would love to see even more people. My, like more families here and I was going to bring my daughter tonight. She would have been miserable, but I feel like we can make these meetings. Um, we can bring even more people in if we have. Especially at the library, if we can offer childcare. We could get a lot more parents here. And I saw so many parents show up at the school board meetings. You know, and and I feel like they should also be here because it's not just our schools that we care about, care about the whole community. And if we could make it something that was a little bit more family-friendly and have a potluck and. Maybe sit in the circles so we can see our fellow members of this town. It would be. I think exciting and I think it'd be great to have our kids watch us be involved in our synergy. Thank you.
I, I would also, it's great, you know, and. The one reason we have libraries, and I, thank you so much, is that people show up. We'll have a library. We actually have these meetings. Once a month, every two weeks sometimes, and it's carried and it's built. And that's, and that's, and Victoria's, Victoria's, Victoria's always on the, on the, on the. I mean, so that's my question. But that's, that's it. We don't, we don't get a lot of um people showing up for our meetings. And, and I feel in the issues we talk about are very important issues that turns that into town and having feedback from all of you is. It's detrimental to us.
I want to say too, I found out about this on, I only on Facebook for this forum because I find out about stuff in this town, but. I'd also love to see like um more physical signage about these meetings. And I did say that about town meeting too. I found town meetings so hard, like I'm. My daughter goes to that school and I thought I was in the wrong place because there was no signage. And I didn't even just look at the signs. I cannot be a part of the.
We have someone in the back with a question. Yes, Bill.
Addressed accountability issue briefly, um permitted, that there, whether people realize it or not, but when anybody presents a project. Like my housing project down the road, we have to go through um all the ten. Um, sections of the plan and demonstrate how a project meets the town plan. So there are, there is accountability to it already. Now, pardon?
There are loopholes that are hidden, like Hampton Inn, it was one point five parking spaces instead of one. The H P and the Ruby. It's going to be a three hundred and twenty six restaurant. What do they have? Seventy parking spaces for a three hundred and twenty seat restaurant?
Because our, our town plan says, okay, that we don't create parking spaces. Specifically for an onsite performance um or onsite eat, but we allow varying availability depending on times of use and so on. So. It, there is that accountability. If we don't like the standards, then we have to address that separately.
We're, uh, the parking issue is a high priority issue for the planning commission, the DRB and the select board. So. Um, let's, let's wait and see what happens with that, but it's, it's top of the list.
It needs to be.
We're going to um. During this meeting now, we have to listen, uh, you shouldn't say it that way. That was a bad mistake, Kelly, pardon me. We're looking forward to listening to some input from Kelly on the new mandated issues that we have in the town government seat.
Oh, would you want me to come up?
I don't know whether they want to come up, sit here, or what do you want to do, Kelly?
Um. I can talk to the mic so that anyone can.
Thanks, Mike.
Sorry, I'm up with something else on the agenda for me.
Give me thirty seconds. There is something before you pay for parking proposal on the select board ninety eight moratorium. No, go ahead, Kelly. You stay right there. We have not gotten to the point where we can talk about that today. Um, it's, there's issues in the works and. It's a high priority, but I think we want to skip over that and go right into uh the work that B C R C is doing for the town plan.
Sure. Um, hi, uh, I'm Kelly Mishburn. I work at B C R C. Uh, I am not a Manchester resident, but I'm a frequent Manchester visitor and an admirer. Um, so I'm mainly here tonight to just talk about the schedule for the town plan update. Um. So B C R C will be working with the town over the next several months to update the town plan. And it's a pretty tight timeline. Current town plan expires on May ninth, twenty twenty five. That might seem like a long time from now, but it's really not. It's going to be, be here before we know it and it's really not a lot of time for a town plan update. So I had sent Elias a rough schedule and outline that I believe he shared with the members of the planning commission. And hopefully you've had a chance to look at the outline as well as the timeline. And you can see if you looked at the timeline, it's pretty tight. Uh, we're proposing to. Uh, have a draft for, for you all to react to uh by February third, which is very soon. It's about two months from now. Um. And, you know, that is also to allow time for the adoption proceedings because that's going to take some time. You know, there's a planning commission hearing that needs to happen. There, there needs to be at least thirty days warning in advance of that. Uh, then the select board needs to hold at least two public hearings uh with thirty days notice uh of those. Um, and then uh, then comes adoption. So if you want to have. A plan ready for adoption by the expiration date of the current plan, it's a very tight timeline. Um. With, you know. February third draft delivery, hearing of the planning commission in March and then um. The select board hearings probably in April sometime with a final meeting of them to adopt the town plan.
Question, I have two questions. So Kelly, in, in this timeline, which I, I assume. Uh, does everyone in the room have the timeline?
No.
Part of that? No, so. Um, I'm not going to go through all of the dates that are in here, but I've, I've been willing to share that with everyone who does want to see it. Um, Kelly, it, it, for some reason, this is. Just to, to clarify, this plan and this timeline is assuming that nothing goes wrong. We don't miss a single meeting. A majority of the members of this commission don't vote against something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't vote in a way that, that slows something down. Um, so this is, nothing goes wrong, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is an assumption that uh the select board will want to. Adopt the plan at a separate meeting after, you know, after the second public hearing. Technically. They could adopt the plan at the close of the second hearing, but if there is a preference to. You know, give it time to consider, you know, anything that's brought up during the public hearing. So that's built into it. And yeah, that's assuming that you don't want to have. A lapsed period with, you know, with the town plan having expired, even though, you know, you'd be working towards. An update to it. So this is again, an assumption that you want to have. A new town plan ready for adoption by the expiration of the other one, so that there is no lapse where the town does not have. Uh, an adopted town plan.
And um what happens if we, this or that?
So if there's a period of time where the town does not have a current town plan. Um, you know, there, you won't be able to make any changes to your zoning bylaws, which you know, you might not be. Doing during that time anyway, um but you wouldn't be able to update them. And then if there was any. Grants that you were applying for during that, that period, um, you know. There might be some grants that you're not eligible for, um, some state grants, like for example, the municipal planning grant program. Um, or just a branch where you don't. You don't get, you know, the additional points that come with having an adopted municipal plan. It's not. The end of the world if you have a lax period. Uh, you know, generally the way we operate is, you know, we prefer to. You know, work with towns so that there isn't a period where they don't have an adopted municipal plan, but um. If it happens, it happens because, again, this is a very. Really ambitious, really optimistic timeline. Um, assuming that there, that, you know, the draft we delivered would have no significant, you know. Comments from the planning commission, which is not necessarily going to be the case. Um, yeah.
Um, the four components that you're going to assist us with that are new mandates. Uh, are those available to see now, um, what you're going to, in effect, insert in the town plan?
So I'm not sure I entirely understand the question.
Well, basically, there's a new mandate.
Right.
It's going to exist, say, one eighty-one or one eighty or something. Are you going to be able to furnish that to us fairly soon so we can look at it? Before, and tell us where it would be inserted into the town plan?
I mean, I think our plan was to have something ready for you by February third.
There wouldn't be any chance of looking at that new mandate in advance of that?
I mean, I'm not entirely, it would, it would depend on the, the timeline that, you know, we're working. And I don't know that we would necessarily have something for you. To, to look at initially until that February third date. Again, that's only two months from now. That's a, that's a really short timeline to have something ready. Uh, we might be able to have just like, you know, some short draft language that you can take a look at, but in terms of like. You know, the more fleshed out requirements of Act eighty-one, uh, you probably wouldn't be able to look at it in its entirety until that February third draft.
And. So the outline that inspired us, it appears as though the changes that B C R C is proposing are to every session in the town. So can you clarify? Is the B C R C just going to make the changes to update the town plan and the four changes that Wilbur referenced to update the town plans with. Compliant with the statute, or is it, or would be changing the entire town?
So we're not changing the entire town plan, but the four elements that we've talked about that Wilbur referenced are sort of. Built into the, the red, you know, the red sections, what you have before you. Uh, assuming you're looking at Samers and I have uh in red areas that are going to be substantive changes. So again, the, the broad buckets are. The Act one eighty-one compliance section, the whole act. Uh, client section, uh, updating the Act one seventy-four energy element. And then uh referencing. More recent studies that the town has undertaken through its various planning projects. So. Those are the four, uh, oh, and Act one seventy-one, excuse me, I'm exhausted at. Uh, the Act one seventy-one compliant forest, um, forest block chapter, uh, or section. And so that's built into that and, you know, the, the section, the broad bucket where we are referencing more recent initiatives and studies. That the town has undertaken, uh, again, is a little bit more broad, so that's why you might see that there are some areas where we can propose. Uh, you know, updating and referencing, you know, the recent projects that the town has undertaken, but that's. All of the proposed changes that we have in the outline are reflective of those larger buckets that we discussed.
Questions on that? Yeah, I think that shows on that.
Paul Gross here, his question.
Paul?
Hi there, it's actually Chrissy and Paul. We just have a question on the. The, you talk about updates to the plan and that, will, will some kind of a record be provided of achievements from the twenty seventeen plan? To. You know, what was done since that plan?
I. Ready to answer that question as best as we can, but I can understand that we should. as best as we can, but I can understand that we should be looking at what we've achieved. I remember reading the town plan and the first thing I came across uh, was the recreation, um, portion and, and that was really well done. And, and that is something that we have to continue right on through different cat, the different categories we just talked about. Where do we stand versus the plan that we have in place?
And something that we, uh, also have noted here on the outline is adding a new implementation matrix to the plan. Uh, that's actually also a new, uh, requirement for town plans is that now, uh, town plans need to have, uh, town plans have, have an implementation section. And that's actually, you know, as part of the, the outline that you shared with everybody here for the discussion. But, uh, now town plans need to have a, a little bit more meat to their implementation section of their plan and have a matrix, which is basically just a fancy name for a table that, um, just pulls out, you know, some of the actions that are referenced earlier in the plan and just putting together some, you know, rough timeline for when it's going to be accomplished, who within the town government is responsible for it. And if there are any funding sources attached to it. So, uh, that's something that we are now adding in, uh, recommending that, you know, it is added to town plans that we work on, uh, from now on. So there will be that implementation matrix element to the plan, which I think going forward could provide the planning commission with a handy template for doing that sort of evaluation of here are achievements from the past plan and, and, you know, here's where we want to go. It's like, you'll have in that table, all of the, you know, action oriented policies in the town plan in one place that you could take a look at and say, okay, we did this. We didn't do this. We're working on this, you know, oh, we need to, you know, make more progress in this. So I think that would be a helpful tool going forward.
Any comments from here? No, we're trying to either go for extension or to adjourn. We go under seventy.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yep. No, I'd, I'd like to move that we extend this meeting by twenty minutes.
We have to ask Ed if we're in this space.
Um, Ed, what, what's.
Well, I've, we, we.
Going through the list that I had of a business. Do you have some other business?
Uh, yeah, I, I could add. Uh, so I, I, so I guess we're, we're officially another business team.
So.
Sure. Okay. So I, I just wanted to say to everyone in the room. So thank you so much.
We're.
For coming. The, the accountability, the, the question of accountability was thrown up multiple times. And while I, I hear what everyone's saying, and I think there's, there's some movement here on the, that initiation to figure out different ways of holding that on yourselves accountable. But, um, you know, different queer organizations within, within town, everyone. But I just want to say that ultimately it relies on everyone in this room to hold us accountable, to hold the town accountable, to hold the select board accountable, to hold the planning commission accountable. So I'm really grateful. Um, and, and somewhat surprised that we've, we've garnered this much tendence at this meeting. Um, and really want to stress how the accountability component of what we are trying to do today. And what you all have done today by showing up is, is exactly how we're going to accomplish what it is we're trying to do specifically with the town plan. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.